Updated information was that the victim of the stabbing was leaving. Deputies then received a second call with the victim's name and that he was being taken to Mercy. Deputies arrived at the residence and met with the homeowner. The homeowner stated his wife had originally called nine one one. She had seen multiple people she did not know in her driveway. She then saw someone get stabbed. She reported that the victim and suspect had left. More people were in the house but denied knowing what had happened. A deputy had responded to Mercy and was able to speak with the victim. The victim gave the suspect's name and advised the suspect did live at the residence. The girlfriend of the suspect was located hiding in a crawl space and reported that her boyfriend, the suspect, had fled the residence out the back door. A K nine deputy began a track to locate the suspect. A neighbor came over and said that the suspect was at their residence requesting a ride. The suspect was taken into custody. According to the girlfriend of the victim, they had gone to the residence as the suspect's girlfriend had claimed she was being held and abused by her boyfriend. Upon their arrival, the suspect's girlfriend refused to leave with them. The suspect was hiding in a car in the driveway and advised that he heard the victims. Or I'm sorry, the victim was hiding in a car in the driveway. Sorry, I've just got my suspects and victims mixed up. The suspect was hiding in a car in the driveway and advised that he heard the victim state he was going to start damaging vehicles and that is when he got out of the vehicle he was hiding in. The suspect stated that the victim threw two punches at him, at which time he stabbed at the victim with the knife. The suspect was arrested and taken to jail. The case is under further investigation. Gets kind of complicated because who you would think would be the victim of this, you know, the person who's going to get assaulted, turns out to have be the one taken into custody, which is where my mind just went blank for a minute there. Sorry about that. Aggravated robbery, third degree assault, and motor vehicle theft. Deputies were dispatched to a mobile home park at five oh four AM on a male who had been jumped and had his vehicle stolen. The victim was able to identify the suspects who had taken his car and assaulted him. Upon deputies arriving, the male who had a large knot forming under one eye and blood in his mouth. The victim reported he was contacted by one of the suspects who wanted to hang out at a mail building on the property. The victim drove up to the building, at which point the two suspects got into the vehicle. At that time, he was told to empty his pockets and give them the car. The victim did not want them to take his car, at which point they started hitting him. The victim reported it felt more like a fist striking him. He then escaped the vehicle and ran back to his home. Another deputy at the scene had located the stolen vehicle in front of another residence. The vehicle was not occupied, but there were brass knuckles on the front seat. A K nine deputy was deployed and the two male suspects were located nearby. One suspect was a juvenile, so he was transported to Lido Lake's juvenile facility. And the other suspect was an adult, so he was transported to jail. Snowmobile personal injury crash. Deputies in East Bethel Fire were dispatched to a snowmobile personal injury crash at Highway sixty five and Viking Boulevard. Upon arriving, a female met with Deputy Sorenson and advised she had been traveling with a friend on snowmobiles heading north up the ditch area of Highway sixty five. She looked back and saw that her friend was no longer behind her, so she circled back and found his crashed sled in the drainage ditch and he was laying at the top of the embankment. The victim reported he crested a hill and did not realize that it dropped into a drainage ditch. The male thought his leg was broken. There was not any indication of drugs or alcohol. The male was transported by ambulance to the hospital. And then tonight, seeing as we're still in the virtual meetings, I thought I would at least introduce you to your East Bethel deputies that are contracted to work for East Bethel for this year. And they, you have, actually, most of you should remember all of them except for Raleigh Sorenson. He had, he used to work East Bethel and then he, he had a a three-year stint as one of our fraud investigators. So he came back out to the road in January and he used to work East Bethel quite regularly, so he may look a little familiar to you. But he is back, back out on the road after, like I said, a three-year stint. We have Brian Collier, who has been in East Bethel for a few years now. He and Raleigh both work the day shift, so one of them is on. Of course, you know, if, if one is out at training or they have vacation or, or those kinds of things, we have other deputies that fill in, but these are your main deputies. And then for our power shift, we have Jordan O'Broughton, and I think this is his second year working the contract. And we have Ryan Rockets, who has been kind of a staple in the East Bethel contract. He went from Ryan Rocky, better known as, he went from working nights, I think, two years ago to the day, to the power shift, which is two in the afternoon till two AM. And that seems to work better for scheduling, so he stayed on that power shift along with Jordan O'Broughton. And then finally, your night shifters, you have Matthew Madsen and Aaron Lynch. And they both were night shift East Bethel last year, so they must, they must have found something they liked and wanted to stay in the contract. So that, those are your deputies. And like I told Mayor Voss, when we do go back to in-person meetings, we can certainly, you know, do something to get them, you know, all come in and, and some introductions. Okay?
That would be good. Any questions for Commander Landry tonight? You got off easy.
You guys let me off easy every time.
And now you just jinxed that, so. Okay, very good. Shelley, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too.
Next on the agenda is our fire department report, and Chief DeSharm is here. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for January of two thousand twenty-one. We went on seventy-two calls. Sixty-two of those were medicals, or eighty-six percent. And seven of them were related to car crashes. We had a couple of alarm calls and we had three burning calls, illegal burns, and smoke in the area. January was a record month for, for any January that we've ever had with the seventy-two calls. And we were actually, compared to January of two thousand twenty, we were twenty-two calls ahead of, of last year. Other than that, the vehicle crashes were related to weather, no doubt, and the medicals were of wide variety. February so far, we've had three major calls I just want to report to the council. Just last week, we were responding to a hazardous materials call at a, at the apartments, and it dealt with a resident there. She was cleaning the bathroom for her mother and mixed too much chemicals, cleaning chemicals together and created a vapor cloud that was very dangerous. We ended up evacuating the entire first floor of the apartments. We did have the, what we call the CAT team, which is the chemical assessment team, state team, come out and assist us. It was a happy ending to the story. Nobody got hurt. The exposures were very minor and we were able to ventilate. And I think the, the daughter learned a valuable lesson of what to mix and what not to mix. So this past weekend, we also worked with Oak Grove on a mutual aid fire. They had a large pole barn that burned down and we supplied not only manpower but also water and also used our station two as a fill station for, for the tankers coming in. We were involved with Oak Grove on that call for about four and a half hours. And then we had our own pole barn fire about ten days ago. And that consisted of a building that the homeowner was using heating lamps to create a warm environment for some small animals. And one of the lamps malfunctioned and burst and started the fire. There were no injuries and the kitty cats got out, got out without getting hurt too. So everything was good. Any questions from council?
Any question for Chief tonight? Guess not.
All right. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Stay safe.
Have a good evening. Uh, next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Is there a motion tonight?
I'll make a motion to adopt Mr. Consent Agenda.
Motion made, second. Any discussion?
I'd like to pull item D and E, please. I will pick the poll item B as a boy.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, to the motion, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi, and that motion passes. Uh, Shelley, item B.
Uh, the only thing I have is on page thirty, uh, down towards the bottom, uh, it says, Beck asked how owned the land? I'd like to change how, H-O-W, to who.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Okay. We have a motion on item B.
Make a motion to approve item B, meeting minutes February first, City Council Work Meeting.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi, and that motion passes. Suzanne, item D.
Item D is the adoption of the federal grant policy. And I'm going to say I'm disappointed that the city brought this, such an unprofessionally written document before us for approval. It is filled with grammatical errors, format errors. For instance, if you have an A, you really need to have a B. That's basic grammar. It lacks citations of references. There's numbers and then there's Roman numerals, there's incomplete sentences. And I could, if you like, I could start going through some of them. But it's, I, I, I would really like, just like to make a motion to table this and let it get fixed. Let me go to, to page, um, where it is, and I'll list you some of them. And, um.
Suzanne, if you'd like to, if you'd like to table this, that's, that's fine. We're not in a hurry. Correct, Jack?
You're muted.
Jack, you're on mute.
I think we can wait till the next meeting. This was recommended and prepared by our auditor. Suzanne, I agree with you. It's fairly poorly written, but they want to have something in our audit that they can reference to on the PERS funds that they did the audit on, the single fund audit. So we can send this back to them and ask them to rewrite this and correct many of those mistakes that you've listed.
Right, and, and I can talk to you offline, you know, and tell you some of the issues that, that I haven't listed that concern me, like using we and are and, I mean, who are they, who is we? Who is they? It, it's not making any sense. It didn't make a lot of sense to me. So I'm just going to make a motion that we table item D on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi, that motion passes. Suzanne, item E.
Item E, this is the Baton Trail Bid, and I brought this up before. I don't understand this trail. It's like a trail to nowhere in my, in, in my view. It, I, I would like to know what the whole plan is. I mean, it would make a lot more sense if this trail were being put on the road that Booster Park is on or something. What is, what is the exact purpose of this trail? Can somebody explain that to me? And where it's going? Cause I, I'm just, I'm just really confused about this trail. It makes no sense.
Suzanne, originally, this was a trail planned to connect Booster West and Booster East Park to the Cedar Creek Ecosystem and Scientific Reserve. Due to the length of it and the expense of it, it would have to be done in many different phases. Phase one was the Prairie Ridge subdivision portion, which the developer did. He did the first quarter mile. This is, this next extension will now give a walking path or a walkway all the way from Booster to West to Booster East, although it does include walking on some residential streets, two twenty-ninth Avenue. Cedar Creek Ecosystem and Scientific Reserve has told the city before that they would give an easement along the inside of the fence, along two twenty-ninth, all the way to Durant and into two thirty-fifth. So at some point, if we keep following the plan and adding segments, this will get us up to the shelter on two thirty-fifth and the cross-country ski trails and the trail around Fish Lake.
Well, now that makes a lot more sense. Thank you. All right, I'll make a motion to approve item E on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion made, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi, and that motion passes. Uh, we have no new business tonight, uh, under Department Reports, Public Works. Jack?
Item seven E one, one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue Streetlight. At the city's request, Connectus Energy has provided a quote for a street light at the intersection of one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue and Highway sixty-five. A Cobra-style overhead light would be installed on the existing utility pole located on the north side of the intersection. Even though this pole is further from the intersection than normal, Connectus has assured us that the more luminous two hundred and fifty watt LED light will provide adequate lighting for this location. The installation cost for the light is two thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and includes the light mask, the light itself, and a transformer. Connectus provides an energy and maintenance agreement for street lights used throughout the city. Their term is twenty-five years and covers all monthly electrical usage and any required maintenance. The monthly rate for this light is five dollars and seventy-six cents. Funding for the street lights are provided from the general fund within the street maintenance budget. This item is discussed at the December seventh, two thousand twenty, City Council Work Meeting, and staff is directed to obtain costs for the installation. Staff recommends that City Council consider approval of the installation of a street light at one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue and Highway sixty-five.
Is there a motion on this tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the one eighty-fourth Avenue Streetlight installment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made, second. Discussion? Hey, seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Chris, you're on mute.
Everybody has to take a turn. Councilmember Harrington?
All right.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi, that motion passes. Uh, next item, city entrance signs.
Item seven E two. In Oakville County Highway Department has completed a street sign retro reflectivity inspection on signs in their system and found that five of the ten East Bethel City Limit Signs fall below the required standards and need to be replaced. Retro reflectivity is the amount of light that is reflected from a street sign. And as signs age or are damaged, the reflection can drop below the minimum threshold. Locations of the city limit signs are exhibited in attachment one in your packet. Attachment two and three in your packet are photos of our existing city limit signs on county roads and on Highway sixty-five. These signs are forty-two inches by twenty-four inches, and the cost to replace the county signs would be three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Attachment three is a photo of our existing city limit signs on Highway sixty-five. These signs might be a replacement option for Viking Boulevard for the smaller forty-two by twenty-four inch signs. These signs are seventy-two by twenty-four, and the cost of these two signs would be two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Staff recommends changing all ten signs as those that pass the retro reflectivity test could require replacement with the next inspection. The In Oakville County Highway Department would install all ten signs, no charges to the city. The two county city limit signs on County Road seventy-three and twenty-six at the Isanty County Line are the responsibility of the In Oakville County Highway Department. Staff recommends City Council consider, one, either replacement of the five non-conforming signs at a cost of three hundred and fifty-five dollars, or all ten of the forty-two by twenty-four city limit signs at each entry point on county roads at a cost of seven hundred and ten dollars, or finally, eight forty-two by twenty-four and two seventy-two by twenty-four city limit signs, with the two larger city limit signs being installed on the east and west end of Viking Boulevard at a cost of seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, is there a motion on that? We have some choices.
I'll make a motion to recommend number two, replacing all ten at the size of forty-two by twenty-four at the cost of seven hundred and ten dollars.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Discussion?
I have a question. I'm just wondering what prompted the inspection? Or is this just something they do periodically? Or was there a reason for them to be out here inspecting our signs?
That's a required maintenance item that they do and also we do. Actually, we did ours on our city signs about five years ago. So it's one that's done periodically to ensure that these signs meet the reflectivity test and can be seen very well at night.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi, that motion passes. Uh, on to our city history here.
Item seven G one, Sunrise River Watershed Management Organization Propose Twenty Twenty Two Budget. Sunrise River WMO is a joint powers organization consisting of Columbus, East Bethel, Ham Lake, and Linwood. The Sunrise River WMO Joint Powers Agreement provides rules and procedures for operation of the water management organization. Membership in the water management organization and water magic districts is mandated for all municipalities in the seven county metro area. The Sunrise River WMO's draft twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget is submitted to each member city and township annually for their comment and approval and is exhibited as attachment one in your packet. Any requests to modify this budget need to be submitted to the Sunrise River WMO prior to their May sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. After that date, and absent any comment or direction from East Bethel, our portion of the budget would be considered approved at the level indicated in the attached draft budget. The Sunrise River WMO Board prepared this draft budget over the course of its last two meetings. It began as a draft budget of fifty thousand dollars. It followed the Sunrise River WMO ten-year watershed management plan. The board cut six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars from requests from the first draft of the budget. Reductions came from a combination of program cuts and spending down undesignated reserve funds. The draft budget submitted for consideration includes forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars from member municipalities. For comparison, the average budget for the preceding four years of Sunrise River WMO has been four, forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, there's a table that shows the budgets for the Sunrise River WMO for the past seven years and shows that it's barely stayed within the range during that period. The proposed twenty twenty-two Sunrise River WMO budget is forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars as compared to the twenty twenty-one budget of forty thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. East Bethel's portion of the budget is presented in attachment one. It's proposed to be twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars for twenty twenty-two for an increase of eight point six percent from the twenty twenty-one city share of eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Staff requests that City Council consider approval of the Sunrise River WMO draft twenty twenty-two budget.
Jack, would a motion be made to approve the budget? The whole budget of twenty twenty-two or just East Bethel's proposed involvement of twelve thousand five seventy-three?
Actually, it'd be the whole budget, Brian, because that does include ours. I think they're wanting way in on everybody's approval of all the sums. And basically, it's approving all the categories of the funding.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the Sunrise River WMO draft twenty twenty-two budget.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion?
I'm just wondering if it's, well, first, I guess I want to say I want to congratulate them for cutting over six thousand dollars up. But I'm just wondering if they, if they think it's going to end up creeping back up to fifty thousand dollars in the next couple of years, or if they think it's going to kind of stay where it is.
Suzanne, to some degree, they don't really know. It all depends on generally mostly program and projects for the coming year. As you can see on the first page of the report, that budget has fluctuated quite a bit from ten thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars to fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand twenty-three dollars over the last seven-year period. And it's not set, depends on what projects come up and what monies they have to correct, to match grants for other programs. You know, I do know that they do and strive to their greatest efforts to keep this down as low as possible. Uh, next year, it could be lower, could be higher. It just depends on programs and projects. I think they do set their goal is their budget is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. So they do have, they do have a cap and a ceiling, so they did have some requirements that went over that. They do have some other reserve funds that they could spend down to keep the budget within that range.
The only way to get back up to fifty is probably when we have to do, do that ten-year plan again. We just did that about a year ago, so we've got about eight years before we have to start worrying about that ten-year plan again.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi, and that motion passes. March Work Meeting.
Item seven G two, our monthly work meeting is scheduled for March first, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM. Items recommended for council discussion and review could include, but may not be limited to, the following. Finalization of the Bethel Haunted Trails Park Memorandum of Understanding. A general discussion of going forward and direction on the bidco cable franchise agreement. Discussion of a personnel committee. City staffing discussion and internet service discussion. Staff recommends that City Council set the topics listed above for the March first, two thousand twenty-one work meeting agenda.
Jack, didn't we already complete the, the agreement for the Bethel Haunted Trails Park? Why, why do you want that on the agenda?
We, we completed it, but Bethel sent that back with a few revisions on it, so I just want to run it by to see if we're interested in responding to those.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the items listed. I'll make a motion to approve the, um, items listed for the March work meeting for March first, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second? Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell.
Hi.
Mayor Voss.
Hi, that motion passes. On to the ice arena management contract.
The current ice arena management contract with Gibson Management Corporation is set to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The city has utilized Gibson Management since two thousand eight for the management and operation of the city ice arena. The city was responsible for the operation of this facility from its opening in nineteen ninety-five until two thousand six. Super Rink managed the arena from two thousand six to two thousand eight, but declined to renew their contract with the city beyond that year. Gibson Management was hired for the two thousand eight, two thousand nine years as the arena manager, and then received approval for a three-year contract extension in two thousand nine and again in two thousand twelve. The city published notice for and invited requests for proposals for this service in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. And after review, awarded contracts to Gibson Management for one and two-year terms respectively. The request for proposals received limited and unqualified responses due to our geographic location and the size of our facility. Staff has completed the performance evaluation, and based on the benchmark contained in the contract, these requirements have been achieved. Gibson Management has been very responsive and extremely cooperative to issues relating to the operation of the arena. In addition, the overall interaction and experience between the customers and the management service has shown continual improvement over the contract period Gibson's operation of the facility. The new renewal of this contract was discussed at the December seventh, twenty twenty, City Council Work Meeting, and consist, consensus from council was favorable for a three-year extension. All costs for the arena operation were scheduled to be covered by user fees. Proposed management fees from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen were eighty-three thousand dollars. Twenty nineteen through twenty twenty were eighty-three thousand dollars. Twenty twenty through twenty one were eighty-five thousand dollars. The contract proposal calls for management fees of eighty-five thousand dollars in the first two years of the contract and eighty-seven in the last year. Costs for the operation of the ice arena are separate from the general budget or classified as enterprise funds. These monies are collected as user fees and no tax levies are allocated for this cost. City seeks subsidizing the ice arena operations in twenty thirteen, and the arena fund has covered all operational costs since that time. Staff recommends that City Council consider approval of the Gibson Management contract for an additional three years with the term of the agreement to commence on August first, twenty twenty-one and continues through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion on that?
Make a motion for approval of the Gibson Management Company for an additional three-year term with the agreement to commence on August first, twenty twenty-one and continue to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, discussion.
Um, I have a question. Why did it go to three years and not stay at the two-year thing? And my other question is, what, um, were the, this says there's limited and unqualified responses for other bids. What were those? Why were they unqualified? And, um, what was the limited? What does that mean?
Uh, to answer your first question, Suzanne, a three-year contract gives the contractor some stability, especially in keeping their employees. It's also easier on the city not to have to try to negotiate these things every three years. There's clauses in the contract that allow either side to cancel the agreement within thirty days' notice, and that's an unqualified notice. Uh, as far as the other question about the limited and unresponsive proposals, uh, we had proposals from one person who was, had no ice arena rink experience. We had one from a proposal which or was an outfit from Richmond, Virginia. Uh, and we had one that was from Red Wing, uh, Wisconsin that was, uh, part of another large group that eventually went bankrupt. So when I say limited, uh, proposals that we, we received were from, uh, out of the area managers. Their prices were ten times higher than Gibson's, and they all had some conditions in them too, that they expected certain things to be met before they could actually sign the contract. Uh, the other proposal was from someone that had some good marketing skills, but had never run an ice arena before. So, uh, in all, in both years that we did it, we got three proposals over two years.
Perfect, thank you.
Was there another single person interested in running the ice arena? Uh, do you know where that, is that a dead issue or?
What's that? What's that, Tim?
There was another individual that had talked about running the arena, wanting to run the arena from the city, Public Works.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's a dead issue.
That is a dead issue, okay.
Yeah, that, that, that's.
He contacted me and he said he was still interested. That's why I didn't know if he got to you or not.
No, he hasn't had any conversations with me. I think one issue too, but he probably has.
Okay, thanks.
Jack, um, I, I think in the years past, uh, you've contacted Saint Francis Hockey and get their feedback. Um, I assume you did that this year as well?
That's correct. We, we've had very good meetings, not only with Saint Francis Hockey, but more, more with the Saint Francis Use Hockey Association. Uh, they use more ice time than anyone, and, uh, we've had substantial improvements in our relationships with them over the past nine or ten years. You know, I think a good example was, uh, four or five years when we worked together and got the dasher boards replaced, which is a joint cooperative effort, and, uh, that turned out really well. Uh, we solicit and try to get what their needs are and try to meet those as best we can, so. We, we've got real good relations with both of our big customers.
Good. Um, a while back, uh, when we were discussing, uh, when the, when the arena was shut down, that, uh, uh, if there'd be any kind of a, a, a discount or or reduced fees from Gibson for the period of time that the arena was shut down. Did, did you have those discussions with them?
Yeah, yes, we did, and for the month of the shutdown, he cut his fees in half. They did do a lot of work in the arena though for some repairs and some cleanup things, so we felt that was a very, uh, mutual meeting of the minds there to come to that figure, so he did reduce his costs by half of the, the shutdown period from December eighteenth to January the tenth.
That's good, that's good. Um, okay.
I got, I got one more question, Jack. Um, I know the East Bethel's high school girls team has merged with a couple of other cities. Is that, how bad is that going to affect us? Is that going to affect, uh, revenue on the ice arena?
Uh, yeah, there, there, there'll probably be a little reduction in revenue this year mainly because of COVID and the shutdown. Some of that will be offset because we're going to keep the rink open an extra month. We're going to keep it open the month of March, which we normally closed it at the end of February. We did open it earlier and got two or three more weeks of additional revenue, so, uh, if the revenue is less than it was last year, I don't look for it to be significant at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Are, are the high school seasons being extended?
I, I'm not really sure, Steve. I don't know. I, I think they, they may have been extended to some point, or they're just trying to get as much in as they can before the state tournament starts.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell.
Hi.
Mayor Voss.
Hi, that motion passes. On to our staff report, Jack.
I just want to update council on an item that's going to be coming before the planning commission tomorrow night and then before City Council on March the eighth. It's a proposal to create a new residential zoning district. It was originally to be called R three. Uh, it will probably wind up being called Coon Lake Zoning District because that's the area that primarily affects, it has to deal with, uh, actually relaxing standards on small lots. One important thing to remember is that this zoning change will not affect lot size. Lot sizes will not change. Uh, it's being considered to, uh, reduce the amount of variances required for normal types of residential use and development in these types of areas where there's higher densities, uh, such as additions, decks, septic system installation, repairs, and fences. Uh, in the overall picture, it will actually be a big benefit to the residents of those areas. So there will be a public hearing at the planning commission tomorrow night. We sent out one thousand one hundred and forty notices of the public hearings because that were the affected property owners in the radius of the proposal. And at the close of business today, we've had several calls asking questions, but we've had no one that's indicated or has signed up to speak at the public hearing for tomorrow night's meeting. We'll keep that period open tomorrow, so there may be somebody that decides tomorrow that they'd like to do it. But as of now, we've had nobody sign up. We've been able to answer people's questions. Once that's been clarified, I think some of their concerns have been satisfied.
All right, Jack, are we going to have, uh, a computer set up so if somebody comes to the meeting?
That, that, that's correct. We, we would prefer that you let us know so we can make sure how to space everybody out, but there will be a public computer set up in the senior center. So if you cannot, do not want to participate virtually, or if there's the capacity for virtual meetings exceeded, you can come to the senior center. We'll have a public computer there where you can make a presentation or present your comments.
Okay, good. All right.
That's all I got.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jack. Uh, council reports, Brian.
Uh, we had, uh, February's E D A meeting, a couple things on that. We had the Inoka County Regional Economic Development twenty twenty-one strategic plan introduced in the packets given to E D A. Mostly the discussion was of, uh, re, Ms. Hager, uh, re, not retiring, but resigning from her position as economic specialist for Inoka County. And the Inoka County is looking for, um, possible involvement to help select a new candidate, so the E D A, uh, selected, uh, the E D A's president, Ms. Julie Lux, to help interview selected candidates to replace, replace Ms. Hager. So I think that's very good to have East Bethel's face and name and the talents of Ms. Lux to help choose the next candidate. Another round of cares grants were announced. And we talked about, uh, the deed broadband grant and what the city can do to increase internet services of, we have to look at other technologies or what's coming up, or is there other things that we could do? Is certainly an internet discussion. And, uh, that was about it.
Good, thank you. Uh, Shelley.
Unfortunately, my meeting was, uh, canceled, so I have nothing at this time.
Good, Suzanne.
Um, well, I'll be at the planning commission tomorrow. I have been in touch with the airport commission people, and they've scheduled a meeting just for the leadership, um, to talk about, um, what to put on future agendas, so if anybody has any ideas that, of things that need to be discussed regarding the airport, could you let me know so I could research it and plug it in? That's all I've got. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Tim?
Uh, a couple of things. Last Thursday, February eighteenth, uh, the Sunrise Watershed tried to do a little netting on Linwood for carp. Well, they ripped the net, so they only got pulled five car, carp out of Linwood, so it didn't work too well. And then, uh, secondly, we finally got engine eleven back in service Friday night. It's been out of service for two weeks. So I just want to give the council members a little head, heads up. Uh, there'll be a pretty good-sized bill. They had to tear the engine out of engine eleven and rebuild it, so. Just so you, when you see that on the bills next, next month. That's all I've got.
I agree, thanks.
Tim, are they planning to net carp on Martin?
You're.
Yeah, they're, they're going to do typo Martin, and I think they want to try Linwood again, so they, they plan on doing all three of them, so.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Great. Anything else, Tim?
Good.
And I have nothing tonight, so with that, I'll take a mo, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell.
Hi.
Mayor Voss.
Hi, that motion passes and our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Have a good night.